Sir, tonight. The first item is actually a public hearing for the 2025-2026 budget. So, does anyone here speak on the 25-26 budget? And then the hearing is now closed, and we will start with the regular session. And the first item in business is Centurion Project.
Good evening, Board. It's good to see everybody. Hi, Sarah. It's good to see you. My name is Charlotte White, Principal here at Phoenix Elementary. It's just crazy to think that we're already like three days away from the end of the school year with our students. It's been quite a year, lots of learning, lots of growing, lots of tears of joy and some tears of sorrow sometimes. But it's just been an incredible year for us. We have an amazing staff. And just want to give a big shout out to all of our families, our students, our staff for just this incredible year. Today, we got to welcome these PHS seniors through our halls. And we stole an idea that Talents did where we took their kindergarten picture, class pictures, and their fifth grade class pictures and posted them. And everybody was laughing. They did those pictures themselves in a really long time. And then when they came through the halls, things had kind of changed a lot since they were here. But it was such a really, what a great tradition it is for our students to get to see themselves where they'll be in the future. It was a really fun event. And then Bubba, our child development specialist, put this thing on TikTok where you like staged this little time machine where the kindergarteners walk in and they come out as seniors. So, we did that. It was really special for just both the seniors and the kindergarten students. So, I just wanted to give him a shout out. We're gonna get to wrap that up. My next positive is, well, I won't go into specific details. But I wanna, we just looked at all of our data yesterday, and we have some real bright spots. And we still have some room for improvement, but I wanted to share a specific bright spot. Last year, we had five newcomers come in our fourth grade class. So, this year, we have five students who it's their second year here at Phoenix Elementary School. And their growth is phenomenal. When I read to you scores like 393%, 371%, 342%, 341%, and 292%, those are their growth scores in the E.L.A. that won't show up on our S.B.A.C. data, but show that these kids have made two to three years' growth in one year's time. And so, that is because of the hard work of my teachers and the hard work of them. And just showcases that there's so much more than then some of the data that you see. And so, I just wanted to let that be the bright spot of the year, that we have some really great growth. And we have a lot to hang our hat on, and we have a lot of room for improvement. But we're really proud of what we've done here at P.E.S. this year. That's it for me. Oh, we do have Field Day tomorrow if you want to come check it out. It's always a hit. And then we also have Kinder Graduation next Tuesday and Fifth Grade Graduation next Tuesday during the day. If you can make it, we'd love to have that.
Good evening, everyone. Kent Faleer, proud principal at Orchard Hill. I have some excellent, some excellent news tonight regarding our preliminary S.B.A.C. scores. I'm just gonna give you some of the data that's not final. It fluctuates a little, little bit, but not too much. Really proud of our entire staff and our aides and everybody else who contributed to the academic success at Orchard Hill. So, a few data points. Our third grade reading is one point, one percentage point below the strategic plan goal, 45%. And that's in 2027, as you guys know. So, third grade reading came in at 44% meeting standard. And currently, the third, fourth, and fifth graders combined in reading are three points above the Oregon State average. So, I was thrilled about that. Another great statistic from the S.B.A.C., 38% of last year's fourth graders met S.B.A.C. reading this year. Last year, that same cohort, fourth graders last year were at 38. This year, 62% of them.
Wow.
So, that's, you know, 24 percentage points. It is quite a gain. One class at Orchard Hill, 80% of the students that met reading S.B.A.C. Awesome. As we know, math can be a little more challenging, but we have some good growth in that. As a school, we increased eight percentage points. Last year was 25% meeting, this year 33%. And fourth and fifth grade increased significantly. Fourth grade achieved 22% last year, and this year came up to 35% meeting. This is another amazing statistic. Last year, fifth grade in math, 15% met standard. This year, 29% are meeting. And that's two points, just two points below the Oregon State average. So, really proud of our staff and everybody, families, kids that worked hard, dedicated themselves, and your support as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Happy Spring. Glad to help Talents Elementary. We always do this. We go ditto. But I just, you know, like, kind of, because I'm really excited and data coming out. I, I'm not gonna curse myself and say numbers. And it's all preliminary, but just really some nice growth, especially in the area of math. So, really proud of my staff in that. We also did a data review yesterday. So, just really fun to hear, you know, the successes and celebrate the work of our teachers and educators. Today, we did have Field Day. So, a big shout out to Carly Richardson, our P.E. teacher, and all of the TMS leaderships of Team Work Health. Rebecca, who helped. We worked together, make it something really fun to have the kids. Everybody's really tired, because, you know, during that, we had all the grad walk, which is awesome. And I just really appreciate the high school carrying on that tradition. Because we had a huge group. It was really interesting to see of all, how many kids were at T.E.S., you know, back in the day before we cut all the weirdness. So, that was fun. Tears on both sides, you know, students, staff, parents. Like, it was just really special. So, thank you guys for your organization for that. This time here is also when we get to do our end-of-the-year evaluation meetings with our teachers. It's just a time for us to sit down and really, like, hear from the, "How are you doing?" And really kind of look at the work that they've done and did it through intentionally. And it's just a deep pleasure to hear such professional discussions around student growth or their holding space for, like, shoulders. It's just, it's magical. And I found some really cool conversations with our teachers. So, just grateful for those moments. And, yeah, I'm gonna stop it. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, Board. Casey Omsen, Principal, proud principal of Talents Middle. And short and sweet, I really, I know it's like every school can have a plan at the end of the year, crazy and logistics and getting through and all that. We have our Field Day tomorrow, which will be my first Field Day experience at Talents Middle School. So, I'll let you know our experience on that. I'm excited to again have fun off for our kids.
I say, good luck.
Thanks. And then we also have our eighth grade graduation promotion on Monday, just to be able to honor them. And it is something like, thank you, and chatting with some of the eighth graders today. Just with it being my first year and just being able to still build, just create some great relationships and great kids at the high school it's gonna be getting. And I think when the grad walk came through, just excited to continue my time here and see some of the kids that are gonna be walking those halls that I know as they graduate and being able to experience that. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to one individual right now. Deanne Tanner, she is our office manager. And I've told her multiple times, I'm sorry a lot lately to keep me on track, keep me organized. There's just so many pieces at play. Without her, it would not happen, for sure. So, just wanted to give her a few shout outs. And also, just thank you to this team, thank you for the board. You know, as me reflecting on this year and just being grateful to be in this community and a part of what we do. So, thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm actually the most proud principal. Forgot to remember it yesterday. Yesterday was Field Day for our spirit competition winners. And one of the things that I love the most about Phoenix High School since I've been there is watching the spirit grow. As you know, there's something to be said about legacies and traditions. And we definitely set a goal, my first year and the seniors, the sophomore year, to increase spirit. And I would like to say that we have watched that happen. And so, yesterday, it was a great day. The fire department came and they sprayed everyone with their fire hoses. And we had, it's a ton, but some town fun, but I promise it is. So, I just wanted to thank our grad coaches, counselors, student management staff, and our seniors for just making yesterday so fun and exciting for students. We kind of joke, "It's one of your last moments to be a child. Have fun before you launch into the adult world." And they had a great time. And grad walk, as you heard already, was amazing as well. That happened this morning. Thank you to Jose Valla for always capturing moments like this for students and families. Not everyone can get away and be part of that. And so, just being able to have some moments of watching those beautiful, you know, transitions and rites of passage is wonderful. We want to shout out to James Joy and Brian McGinnis for running the elementary track event. We love having that on our campus. And I know especially Coach Cornet loves having that on our campus. And so, we had a great time. I wanted to let you know that something else that I'm really proud of is our by-literacy seal achievements this year. We've issued all, and we'll celebrate the graduates this Saturday with that. But we beat our own record with 22 seals of by-literacy. And we want to thank Maria Lee and Maggie Taylor Cheek in supporting the testing of so many students to ensure that those things are documented for them before they move on to their next stage. And then I also wanted to let you know about a new tradition that we started this year, the white tassel. As you know, the more things that you wear at graduation, the better, is what the kids say. So, they're always trying to earn new cords and tassels and pins and stoles and I don't even know all the things. But we started the new tradition of a white tassel. And so, it's for any students who exceeded or passed on their O.S.A.S. or Smarter Balance Assessment. And this year, we had 81 students who burned that white tassel. And you'll see those at graduation. So, they passed either one or more of the math, reading, writing, and science tests their junior year. So, just a few things from the test. See you at graduation on Saturday. Drink some water.
Yeah.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Easton Ready Academy. Apparently, it's required to be proud now, so. But not parent. A moderately proud principal. I'll work on the adjective. So, just a couple of quick heads up. First of all, we're gonna be recognizing our kindergartners, fifth graders, and eighth graders Monday at 6:00 here on the little, wherever that little park is over there, Otocaster Park. It's kind of a sweet little ceremony. We're gonna have a chance to recognize those classes. We've got some really cool kids in all of those groups. And both of our teachers do a really good job working with those kids and their families in most cases. It's as much a family job as it is a student job. And speaking of our teachers, we are excited about welcoming a new middle school teacher next year. We're gonna have that person's name in front of you guys as a recommendation to hire here soon. But we've got a really good one, I think. And that person, of course, is replacing Heather Ursula, who has served our district for 32 years. 27 years at the middle school and then five years in P.T.R.A. So, she has been a stalwart here in the district and done great work over the years. Can't say enough about her. We've had so many families here in the last five years that said specifically they came to P.T.R.A. because they had experiences with her either as themselves as a student or their students previously. So, she's just been a real asset to the district. And I want to take one more chance to thank her for all of her service. So, that's it for me.
Come on up, Kent.
Thank you. I will say I'm enthusiastic, early learning director, and talk briefly a little for a minute. We have our first free day graduation tomorrow, not to be left out of all the graduation festivities. We have 13 kiddos that are transitioning to kindergarten next year. And tomorrow is our little doo-doo free day graduation. And I'm super excited. I just want to give a huge thank you to our staff that have been preparing, of course, just that have been amazing all year, and then preparing for how we can squeeze in our families and celebrate our littles tomorrow as well. It'll be really fun, and we're hoping to capture some wonderful, amazing pictures and get them out there with everyone else's. And in that, I want to give a shout out to Monique Strain, who obviously is over here at District Office, but under that, like, other duties as assigned. She's the de facto preschool office manager. She came back this year and learned she had other duties assigned. And she's just been super awesome all year, right? Doing all the records and all the things that we would think we need to do in the, in the school situation. She's very crafty and creative. And so, when you see the pictures and you see cute things, 100% not me. Definitely Monique and the sashes and all the things. So, just want to give her a thank you for that. Also, wanted to shout out Kitty and Nuvia with Community Care really quick. And we somehow picked the best days to have our monthly Community Care Corner. Last week was 96 degrees. We also managed to have it on like down course. So, we, but last week, we had our monthly Community Care Corner, 70 families. 70 students and family combination came through for support. And so, just really proud we can keep doing that. And Kitty and Nuvia have done such a great job of keeping it stocked, helping us know what we need, and advocating for that. We just received an $1,800 check from the Bear Creek Valley Rotary to help support the corner specifically for diapers and wipes. And they also have made it their mission to figure out a way to support us with an awning to help the shade and rain over there, too. So, just shout out on that Community Care Corner. And we'll be open in that, in that area for June, July, and August.
Thank you. Is that even here? No. Yeah, Amy shared something too, putting some next stuff. Anything from the board? Okay. Okay, next, I would like to welcome our new student reps for next year. And we will officially swear you're in your first meeting on the fourth. But I see that we have Emily here and Lincoln, and Rachel, obviously, will be returning. And Elia had a graduation to attend in California and wasn't able to attend. But I just want to welcome you all. Congratulations again, and thanks for being here. And of course, it's the last meeting for our super senior outgoing student reps. And thank you so much for all of your, I mean, just tremendous. Can't say enough about your level of engagement for thoughtful questions that you ask, the meaningful contributions you made to the discussions that we had. We're gonna miss you guys, and you leave some big issues to fill. So, congratulations. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it to you for your final student rep report.
How would I actually want to give a little floor? Because we're not gonna come back, and it's time for time to shine. Yeah, we just haven't been doing speeches in joining. Yeah.
Okay.
Hey. So, Ethan's not here, so I have kind of a bit, a lot to say. Very quick. We have, for the past two weeks, we've had our junior presentation. It's kind of like your preparation for your senior capstones. And I've just, like, through watching with my own class, I've seen a lot of, like, growth from, like, freshman year doing presentations. And so, just like a shout out to, like, Vista Haim and Ms. Johnson for, like, really preparing her students for that really well. Because I, it was just like phenomenal seeing, like, really good presentations as juniors. And like, I can't wait to see capstones next year, which tomorrow, our beautiful seniors will be doing their capstones. We had, last Friday was our freshman field day that we crew hosts. It was a really big day. We had large slides, bounce houses, like snow cones and cotton candy, flipping slides. It was really great. It was really hot, like, very hot. But that took a lot of support. And then yesterday, we had our senior assembly, which was lots of the hostess in the hair. We got to watch our senior slideshow of all of our seniors. It was very emotional. And then they got to walk out to their field day. And then we did our, like, transition walk where the juniors would go to the senior section and everything. So, that was a big moment. We also had our senior awards night, where a lot of, like, just incredible students were recognized. Tuesday was the spring sports awards night, where we recognized the track and baseball, softball, and all of the other spring sports. And tonight is actually the recognition of our shooting. It was delayed for reasons, but I'm really grateful to Ms. Cross and Mr. Joy for making it happen and recognizing that sport when we worked really hard for, like, our fourth place at state. So, just recognizing that. I'm really grateful to Ms. Cross for that. Yep.
Thank you so much for that, she.
Um, well, with that, with this being our last meeting, I just want to say good evening for the last time. And I just want to show my appreciation for these last few years and how much you guys have invested in us as a student body and me and Aubrey as, like, student representatives and all the support you've given us. Because definitely, since the first time we've been here, and Tuesday, it's still very nerve wracking to get in front of here and talk in front of a whole room of very smart adults that help us every single day and got us. But I think we're better for it because we've been under you guys' help. And just even being, seeing our work at the other day, and to see all the people that I grew up with and how much this actually matters to all of us and how much it actually shapes us into who we are. Everyone has a different path to get there, but your guys' help has been amazing. So, really appreciate it. We see people on, like, going into the workforce, people going into community college, university, everything. But nonetheless, you guys are always there to help us out. So, we really appreciate everything, and best of luck for next year, guys.
I just want to say thank you and, like, the opportunity to come out here and just give a voice to the people that I really care about has been something really special. And I've gotten to grow a lot and find my passion, and it's given me a path to lead my way for my future. And I'm gonna miss you guys.
Bless you, too. Thank you.
Here we have all our student reps. It's gonna be a meeting come this morning. Yeah, it'll be nothing yet. Okay. The next is, next item is citizens comments. If anybody wishes to address the board today.
We do.
Okay, great. Do we have any written cards or just?
I didn't throw any cards out. I don't think there's any.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, no worries. If anyone would like to address the board, let's get a microphone. And then if you could just introduce yourself, I will read a little preamble here. As a reminder, school board meetings are meetings of the school board held in public, not meetings with the public. As a general rule, the board will not engage in discussion with the public during this portion of the meeting. When your name is called, come forward and state your name. If joined virtually, please use the raise and feature. Address and identify the organization, if any, that you represent. Keep your remark brief and respect the three-minute time limit. Complaints about staff members cannot be discussed in open session and must be handled through a complaint procedure.
Michael.
Yes.
Mrs. Choa will read, will translate what you just read to ensure that our guest. And then I also have an additional request. I know that we have a three-minute time limit, but due to interpretation needs, I would hope, my hope is that we have a longer time just for our interpretation.
Certainly, yeah, absolutely.
We have to go to the PD, al director de la reunión, que el mes 8 va a leer las instrucciones que les dimos afuera, pero por la formalidad las tenemos que decir ahorita. También le pedí que normalmente tienen solamente tres minutos y pedí que ese tiempo se extienda para asegurarte que haya tiempo para interpretas. Gracias a usted.
Okay. Okay.
Mientras recuerden la respira. Somos humanos. Estamos muy agradecidos por su tiempo con nosotros. Como recordatorio las reuniones del consejo escolar son públicas, lo con público. Por regla general, el consejo no participará en debates con el público durante esta parte de la reunión. Cuando se llamen, hacer que se diga su nombre y participar habitualmente, evidenciar la función de levantar la mano, su dirección e identifique la organización a la que representa si corresponde. Se abre y respete el inicio de tres minutos. They want a little bit of extension in this. Dejar piezas sobre personas no pueden discutirse en sesión abierta y deben gestionarse mediante un procedimiento.
Okay. Mariah Barroca.
Buenas tardes.
Great.
Ah, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maritza La Roja. Estoy aquí. Tengo caso de hay de mi hijo que va a graduado. Y sentí que fueron un poquito injusto al dejarlo, a expulsarlo a días de su graduación.
School.
Y pues, mi hijo se sintió malo.
I can't, I can't.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. I wanna, I wanna, I apologize. I don't want to be able to hear you.
They're starting to interrupt the reunion simply because we can't listen to neither Esther nor Erica. So, lo que vamos a hacer es que si usted habla un poquito y luego Erica va a interpretar, y así podemos asegurar que todo mundo escuchemos. I just interrupted this meeting just so that I know that we're unable to hear. And I will ask Maritza La, if she can speak a sentence or two that'll give Erica and Miss Choa an opportunity to interpret. And we will go back and forth to ensure that everybody can hear what is being said. Gracias, Maritza. Lo siento mucho. Podemos empezar otra vez.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're most welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maritza La Roja.
Good afternoon. My name is Maritza La Roja.
Okay, yo estoy aquí para decirles, mi hijo estaba de grado, mi hijo.
Siento. I am here to tell you guys about my student who is supposed to be graduating this year.
Siento que es un poco injusto al dejarlo salir a días de su graduación.
I feel like it's unjust that my son wasn't able to do graduation.
Este, ahm. Él siento que no tuvo suficiente apoyo en esta escuela.
I don't feel like he received a lot of support here in the school.
Y siento que no fueron muy suficientemente claros al dejármelo expulsar a días de su graduación.
I don't feel like it was clear or parameters were that clear now, days away from his graduation. We board made the decision to expel him from school.
Y siento que nos hicieron como a un lado, como que porque no pertenecemos a este distrito.
I feel like I was pushed to the side because I'm not from this school district.
Y me siento como que tienen a los estudiantes que no son del distrito, pero como que no les importa.
I feel like you guys have students from other districts, and they don't matter.
Siento que los hacen menos y los hacen, los tratan diferente a los que existen de este distrito.
I feel we are treated differently because they don't belong to this school district.
Y no me gustaría que otro niño pasara y los papás pasaran el trauma que nosotros hemos pasado.
I don't want any other student or any other parent to go through the trauma that we did.
Porque mi hijo lo ilusionaron, sentí que lo ilusionaron. Para faltando días de su graduación, me lo echaban a otra escuela.
I feel like he was given false hope, and then days away from graduation, that was taken away from him.
A mi hijo estos días no se le podía tocar el tema.
Those days, my son wasn't able to be talked about, or he couldn't talk about that, that time.
Y si ya se lo hicieron a mi hijo, no quiero que se lo hagan a más niños porque hay más niños.
If it was done to my son, I don't want that to happen to any other student. Because if that happened to my son, it'll happen to other students.
Quiero que los traten a todos los niños por iguales, no porque son de este distrito o no pertenecen a este distrito. Siento que todos los niños tienen un derecho.
I want everybody to be treated equally regardless of what district they attend or they should be attending. I want everybody to be treated equally regardless of what district they attend or they should be attending. What's the last one?
Que todos tienen derecho.
They all have rights.
Y sentí que mi hijo no se lo díamos.
I thought my son was not given that right.
Y tengo más cosas que decir, pero siento que nunca acabaría.
I have many other things to say, but I feel like I would never leave them. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Lourdes. Luego, ah, yo soy mamá de niños que van a este distrito de escuela, pero.
My name is Maria Lourdes. I am a parent here of this school district.
Yeah, ah, mis hijos están en este distrito estudiando, a high school, little, middle school.
But they're part of a high school and a middle school.
Pero nosotros vivimos en left wing.
But we live in that part.
Somos fuera del distrito. Yo vengo a apoyar a las mamás que.
And I'm part of the support that's on our part.
Don't they get told?
Nervios.
Uh, Blanca.
Hola, mi nombre es Blanca Soria. Estoy aquí porque mis hijos presentes sufrier, sufrieron discriminación.
Hello, my name is Blanca Soria. I am present here today because my kids are here today uh for discriminated.
Por parte de una sustituta, teníamos.
By the school's access.
Después de ese incidente, pasó otro con otra sustituta.
After that incident, another one happened with another substitute.
Ellos pidieron ayuda, fue un trabajo que tenían. Ella no los quiso ayudar.
They asked for help with uh uh work that they had and.
Los puso en una lista de niños malos.
And they were put on a list of bad kids.
Porque pidieron ayuda y ellas se la pasó en el teléfono todo el tiempo de la clase.
And she spent all of the time, the cost time doing something on her phone.
Todo preocupa, pero mami preocupó la discriminación que sufrieron ellos.
That was worrisome, but what was more worrisome was the discrimination that they put against me.
Lo siento, pero se me corta la voz.
Right, my voice is very similar.
Porque han pasado muchas cosas en esa escuela.
Because there's been a lot that has happened at that particular school.
Yo, el director, estoy presente, hablé con él.
I have spoken to him.
Y le dije que tuviera cuidado con la gente que contrata.
And I told him that we needed to be careful about who we had there.
Otro incidente con otro sustituto más.
Another incident, another incident with another substitute.
Él quería que le llamaran Daddy.
He was asking to be called Daddy.
Y que si querían, le podía pasar sus redes sociales para platicar con ellos.
And that he could give them his social media to contact them.
Quisiera más atención, más vigilancia en esa escuela porque lo necesita.
I, I am asking for more support with supervision and security of that particular school.
Gracias por escucharnos. Gracias.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I can make it a night.
I wanna say in Spanish. It's not practical for me. Okay, yo soy María Alcalá.
I am María Alcalá.
Soy representante del PAC, de Educación migrante.
Of migrant education.
Y vengo a apoyar a estos papás como están viendo porque.
I'm here to support these families.
Me preocupa lo que está pasando y lo que estoy escuchando. Y como pueden ver, la mayoría son familias latinas.
They are Latina family.
Entonces eso me está dando a mí un indicador.
And that gives me some red flags, I just heard.
De qué algo está pasando. Entonces quisiera que el board, aquí presente, nos apoye. Para mediar lo que está pasando, bueno, dentro de esto y que no les vuelva a pasar. Todos los niños merecen una calidad igualdad hacia todo, todo lo que es educación. ¿Verdad? Muchísimas gracias por escuchar.
I know we, we don't normally respond to comments, but I've just, I heard some concerning things today that I'm hoping you could look into and report back to us.
I'm looking stuff, viendo a lo que es el GTE de nuestra directiva es. Está viendo súper intente que han escuchado las cosas que son preocupantes para ellos. Quieren que dé un poquito de seguimiento a lo que ha escuchado hoy mucho.
I, I wanna say that I'm grateful that you.
Estoy agradecida que.
Were vulnerable and came here tonight to share this. That means a lot.
Any other comments? Feel free to comment. Okay. Uh, next is the superintendent report. Yeah, thank you Chair Campbell. I will acknowledge. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the courage to be able to come and speak. I know that was not easy.
Y ahora me quiero reconocer. Reconozco su, su valentía. Gracias por su contribución para venir aquí y platicar, poner esta plática con nosotros. Eso es lo que dijo, es súper intenso.
Um, in your package, you have a report from John about some summer uh projects, about facilities. Um, even though we are uh near, nearing the end of our bond funds, we still have a lot of activities. Um, with a full summer crew, we need to get going here in a couple of weeks. Uh, also in addition, uh, to your package, Project Youth Plus has included a fire on all the uh updates that they've had over the last uh month. Um, just quickly want to share uh that there is a academic calendar in your um packet. We have, we've uh noticed that. We are, have some conflicting um. Trainings and PD that we want to do, and so we want to modify the first day of new staff. Uh, to the Thursday of the week prior to, I think, uh. In service week instead of the Friday, so that new staff can also take part in the CPI trainings. So we will bring that back for an official action item, uh, so the board can officially adopt that uh for next time on June 18. And then the final thing I have is uh, if you haven't let Denise know if you're going or not going to summer OSBA comforts, please do so as soon as possible. There, uh, she's making arrangements for that um uh very soon, so. So, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barrett? Okay, um, I know that Eden, welcome. I wanted to give you an opportunity if you had a report for the board. Chair, okay, well, I'm glad if you're. Thank you for being here and thank you for your service to the district and to your fellow students this year. It's a joy to have you. All right, um, next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, uh, no, no, no. I approve the consent agenda, um, the revised agenda presented. I will second it.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, information and discussion legislative OSBA update.
Uh, I apologize. I have, I usually prep one and I did not. Um, as you may have seen, um. Senate Bill nine sixteen passed the House today, which is the unemployment um striking bill. It's going back to the Senate because there were some changes in between and then it goes to, goes on, so there's still a chance that it may not work. Yeah. Thank you. So that is the big news for today. Um, our region uh OSBA president is prone in. Um, sent out a letter that she wrote to go to Congressman Cliff Vince. She asked everyone in the region to uh sign on, and so I had. Uh, several people respond, and so that was sent out, I think, today. Um, to ask it, to make him aware of the changes and how the federal funds is so important to our school and all the other smaller schools in the um. Region, and I appreciate the feedback. There was something mentioned about Eastern Oregon and. Region folks said, can we talk about this? And OSBA is like, yeah, let's do whatever. And we um rearranged the letter a little bit and. By the way, Phoenix Tal, since we have talked about this before, and I'm so thankful for this board because I have a lot of board members like. I don't know if I can say anything. And I said, well, our board always talks about policy. I pretty much know. That like we can sign on to something that's funding wise. We've already talked about that. So I, I asked. I think I'm gonna talk to OSBA, but I think it's important for board members to know where they stand. And I really appreciate that we have these conversations all the time. And with that being said, Phoenix Tal at the school district signed the letter uh because I knew that that's something that we would do and I talked with Brett and Mike a little bit. Um, so we were signed on and hopefully he listens and that's all I have. Sarah, do you have anything? Are you mad?
Thank you very much. Uh, committee updates? Let me commit a thing.
Hi, I'm on.
Okay, great.
Um, the safety interagency meeting took place at the district office one hundred four. It was yesterday. There was a lot of talks surrounding mental health of students and families embracing restorative practices, utilizing our best resources. Um, our community partnerships as well as safety drills and a rehabilitation drill in early August. Um, our new Phoenix High School SRO Officer Cooper Camps will be going on paternity. Uh, before returning to the district for duty. And in that time period, it would be Officer Holt again.
Can I get rid of them?
Um, they'll be adding mental health testing tests at both the high school and middle school to the NRTM kids. Um. Phoenix PD. Is adding two more officers by May of twenty six. Um, as they took in a large area north of town into city limits and are hoping for two more officers in the year of twenty six. And for, and in the school year of Ohio.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca.
That's a really good segue into the next item, which is a request uh from Rebecca and that will take action on, on the eighteens. Who attend the twenty first annual school safety conference for educators along course. Yeah, I, I asked Rebecca if she'd be interested in this because I think it's um. We send staff there, SROs go there. I think uh we glean a lot of information. I think it'd be very important. And valuable for a board member's voice there and to bring that uh perspective back, so. Um, happy that she was willing to be able to do that and um we'll consider this next time. Thank you. Um. We're scheduled to, are you gonna put the uh?
I'm looking.
Okay, it's in, it's in our email too.
There we go.
Got it?
We're getting, we're getting there.
Okay. No problem. Um, before we, before we do, before we do a recess, um, if, if, without objection from the board, I, if I may. I kind of sneakily added an action item to the agenda tonight, um, which is resolution. Uh, is it resolution twenty four twelve? Okay, resolution twenty four twelve um in recognition of board member Sarah Crawford. Um, tonight is Sarah's last meeting as a member of the Phoenix Talent School Board. And we will miss her um incredibly and um. I put together a resolution that I would like um each of us to um take part in reading, but first, if I could, I'd love a. Motion from Don um to pass the resolution.
I'm looking for that motion to.
Okay.
Um, but. There must be a secret section to. No.
It's hard to pull off, but.
It, it just appeared now and I'm not finding it. Give me a second. Oh, and while we're waiting, I found it. While we're waiting, Robert, you could come sit over here. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I asked Robert with an hour and a half's notice in here, so uh good planning on my part.
So I. I'm. Will jump in.
Yeah, go for it.
I move to adopt resolution twenty four twelve, recommend, recommendation of the board member Sarah Crawford.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Rick second.
Yes.
I was going to say, I accept that.
Only because I may or may not have already had it printed on the. Thank you for your enthusiasm, Nancy. All right. I'll go ahead and start and then we can just go down the line here. Um. A resolution in recognition of board member Sarah Crawford. Whereas Sarah Crawford has faithfully served the Phoenix Talent School District as a member of the Board of Directors. For nine years from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty five and.
Whereas during her tenure, she. Get away, sorry. She demonstrated unwavering dedication to public education and a deep commitment to students, families and staff, the district. Oh, I made a mistake. Hang on. The third one. One, two, three.
Whereas he. Was instrumental in the successful passing of the twenty seventeen school bond and provided key leadership. On the district bond oversight committee, helping guide the. Construction of the new Phoenix High School and the completion of political facility upgrades across the district and.
Sorry. Whereas she represented the district at the state level as a member of the Oregon School Boards Association, LPC. Policy Committee for three years, ensuring the voice of the community and the board and the state education policy strategy and. Whereas. In addition to her board duties, Sarah generously gave campus volunteer hours to school activities and consistently showed up in support of students. By attending events across the district, modeling the deep community engagement that defines Phoenix talent and.
Whereas she brought thoughtfulness, integrity and a collaborative spirit to the school, helping shape board decisions that put. Students first and build last in community trust.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Phoenix Talent School District Board of Directors expresses its deepest appreciation to Sarah Crawford. Her outstanding service and steadfast leadership and honors her lasting contributions to the success and growth of our schools. And I'm just gonna have to read this part. Be it further resolved that the resolution be entered into the official minutes of the board and a copy be. Presented to Sarah Crawford in recognition of her invaluable service, and I have a copy to present. To Sarah. Really proud of my fifteen dollar pageant screen. Sarah, this is for you. Back down. Nancy.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Paulie.
Yes.
I vote yes. Sarah, thank you so much. How long do you want to recess for, Sarah? It's your call.
Well, we're supposed to be.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Five minutes.
Took five minutes longer than she wanted, so that's kind of described the last five years together, Sarah. You suggest something, I suggest something else. Okay, the first item is, these are budget resolutions, so we have L one A. Do I have a motion?
I'm meant to adopt resolution twenty five dash one, adopting the twenty five twenty six budget as presented. Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion. Okay, we will vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Paulie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Budget is approved. Item L one B.
I'm meant to adopt resolution twenty five two, making appropriations for the twenty five twenty six budget as presented.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Rick, discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. L1C, 25-3?
I'm going to adopt resolution 25-3, to impose ad laram, did I say it right, taxes as presented. Second.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, but Don, let it be known Sarah's last act was passing taxes. Any discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick? Polly? I vote yes. I have to give, I have like five more minutes to give you crap.
He'll take it back.
L1D.
I'm going to adopt resolution 25-4, to categorize ad laram taxes as presented. Please second.
Thank you, Nancy, for seconding, thank you. She
Sarah.
Enforces them and she categorizes them. Any further discussion? All right, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
It's your last chance, what are we gonna do, pick draw? L2, Internal Service Fund continuation for 2526.
I'm going to adopt resolution 25-5, continuing the Internal Service Fund for 2526 as presented. I'll second it.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Polly, discussion? Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Go for it, L3.
I'm going to 25-6.
Yes. L3, sorry.
I'm going to adopt resolution 25-6, authorizing $1.5 million transfer to the PERS EIF fund as presented. I'll second.
I did just have a question about this, the PERS rates improved for school districts. I, or they set the rates lower, right? I was hoping you could just, sorry, Sarah, please explain that, and then does that impact this in any way, positive or negative, that the rates are lower?
Yeah, it could, might. Sure.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's good. Well, it started harder since we're getting on the right.
So that definitely impacted the budget already. It saved us about $350,000 each year. Wow. I think it was closer to $750,000 for the whole line, it just sounds 1.6%. Wow, so it does make a difference, whatever we can save.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Great. Okay. It doesn't really impact this, this is the incentive fund that we're looking into applying for until I first, so. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct, that's to further have savings over the next 20 years.
Yeah, right, which is not going away. Okay, great, any further discussion or clarity needed on that? And I appreciate these proactive efforts to save the district and taxpayers' dollars and whatever.
I think this is one of the first things that happened when I was on the board. Last time was, we took advantage of this opportunity to
Very cool.
A full circle.
Yeah, first, excellent. All right, let the record show that, let the record show, she doesn't just pass back. He saves money.
All the money.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next is the classified contract for 25 through 29. Yeah, just happy to present for your contract, classified for your consideration tonight.
And she wants someone else to make the motion. I'm going to approve the OSBA Chapter 96 classified contract for 25 to 29 as presented.
Thank you, Polly, and thank you, Rick, any discussion on this? I just wanna say, as someone who was on the bargaining team, I really appreciate the collaboration of the team. Really tackled some complex things and have some good plans to continue tackling complex things and really just appreciate the IPP process and how collaborative and problem-solving we were able to be, so really good stuff. Any other discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
I'm gonna be impacted by this contract, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's approved. L5, SRO contracts. Both councils have approved these and have me to continue these partnerships.
I'm going to approve the TMS and PHS SRO contracts as presented.
Please second that.
Thank you, Rebecca, thank you, Nancy, discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. We've already done resolution 24-12. And next is next meeting's agenda, please let me know if you have any questions about that. Just to note, it is Wednesday, yeah, through the 18th, so holiday, thank you, Wednesday meeting, thank you for that note. And in closing, Sarah, thank you for your years of service to the district, we'll miss you.
My pleasure, thank you.
We are adjourned.